This virtual public hearing is now considered open. My name is Heather Carter. I am the Regional Supervisor for the North Carolina Division of Air Quality's Fayetteville Regional Office. I have been appointed to be the Hearing Officer for this public hearing by the Director of the Division of Air Quality, Mike Abrzynski. My purpose this evening is to receive your comments, either written or oral, for consideration in the issuance of a new air quality permit to Madison Asphalt LLC for the construction and operation of an asphalt plant. The proposed location is 3807 US 2570 in Marshall, North Carolina. The focus of this hearing, and the only focus, is to receive public comments on the proposed air quality permit as they relate to the applicability of air quality regulations. The Division of Air Quality is conducting this public hearing digitally to allow for public participation while protecting public health under the current guidance to prevent the spread of COVID-19. The public hearing announcement was published in the News Record and Sentinel on March 31st, 2021, and on the Division of Air Quality's website on March 10th, 2021. During this virtual public hearing, we will be receiving oral comments from those individuals who pre-registered to speak at this event. If you are having technical difficulties with WebEx, you can use the chat feature in WebEx to ask questions or seek assistance. You can also visit the Division of Air Quality's website using the link in the public notice for this hearing for instructions on various ways to connect to WebEx. Joining me for this hearing tonight by WebEx are, from the Division of Air Quality's Raleigh Central Office, we have Michael Pajetra, Deputy Director for the Division of Air Quality, Zainab Nasif, the Division of Air Quality's Public Information Officer, Rahat Ashik, Environmental Engineer with the Division of Air Quality Rules Development Branch, and Matt Porter, Meteorologist with Division of Air Quality's Air Quality Analysis Branch. From the Division of Air Quality's Asheville Regional Office, we have Brendan Davy, Regional Supervisor, and Patrick Ballard, Regional Permit Coordinator. I want to thank everyone involved in getting this public hearing scheduled and organized, with a special thanks to Rahat Ashik and Zainab Nasif for their expertise in setting up this event. There may be dignitaries and elected officials present at this virtual public hearing, and we thank you for your interest and attendance. The Division of Air Quality regulations do not require a hearing or comment period for the issuance of this permit. However, due to significant public interest, the Director of the Division of Air Quality has decided to open a comment period and conduct this public hearing to receive pertinent public comments on whether to allow or deny the issuance of this air permit to Madison Asphalt LLC. The comment period for this permit opened on March 10th, 2021, and will close on May 5th at 5:00 PM. The required duration for a comment period is 30 days per the 15A NCAC 2Q0300 rules. In addition to your oral comments tonight, the Division is also accepting comments via mail and electronic mail. The email address is displayed on your screen. Copies of the permit application, the air permit application review, the draft air permit, and other information concerning Madison Asphalt application are available to the public at the following locations: The North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Asheville Regional Office, located at 2090 US Highway 70 in Swananoa, North Carolina, as well as at the Division of Air Quality's Raleigh Central Office. If you have not done so and wish to review these materials in person, they are available to you during normal business hours at the locations I just mentioned. However, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, an appointment is required. Please call in advance to make an appointment. A copy of the draft air permit and the permit application review are also available on the Division of Air Quality's website at www.ncair.org. The order of events for this hearing are as follows. First, Patrick Ballard, who reviewed the permit application and wrote the draft permit, will discuss the application, the air quality permit, and the air permitting procedures. Matt Porter will also be presenting a brief overview of the dispersion model and meteorology. This will be followed by the public comment period. We will receive oral comments from those individuals who pre-registered to speak at this event. This will allow us to have an accurate hearing record. Only those who have pre-registered will be called on to speak. To provide enough time for public comments, this meeting will be conducted in the following manner. All efforts will be made to call speakers in the same order of your registrations. Oral statements will be limited to a maximum of three minutes in order to hear as many citizens as possible. This public hearing is scheduled to adjourn no later than 9:00 PM tonight. We will call the names of each of the pre-registered speakers in order, and our WebEx host will unmute the speaker when it is their turn to speak. We will also announce the name of the next speaker in the queue so they can prepare to provide comments. Please do not start speaking until the WebEx host has identified that you are able to unmute your microphone. Your time will begin when you have unmuted your microphone. We will keep track of your time and will announce when your three minutes have expired. Please respect the time of all who wish to present oral comments tonight by adhering to the time limits and closing your remarks as quickly as possible once your time is up. Cross-examination of the person presenting comments, or me, the Hearing Officer, will not be allowed. However, as the Hearing Officer, I may ask questions of the presenter for clarification. Questions directed to the Division of Air Quality staff members will not be answered during this hearing. If you have questions for Division of Air Quality staff, we can provide you with our contact information so you may contact them after the meeting during normal office hours. After receiving comments this evening, the hearing record will be closed. However, the period for submitting comments does not close until Wednesday, May 5th, at 5:00 PM. Again, the only focus of this virtual public hearing is the presentation of comments related to air quality issues associated with the new air quality permit for the Madison Asphalt facility and the application of air quality regulations. Only relevant air quality comments can be considered in my final recommendations to our Division Director. I will now call on Patrick Ballard and Matt Porter to discuss the air permitting procedures, permit application review, and dispersion model and meteorology.
Thank you for attending this meeting tonight for the proposed Madison Asphalt Plant. My name is Patrick Ballard. I am the Permits Coordinator for the Asheville Regional Office. Next slide. In this presentation, I will explain the air quality permitting process, describe permit classification for the proposed Madison Asphalt Plant, describe the equipment being permitted, and summarize the draft permit requirements. Next, please. The permit process consists of permit application and receipt and review, verifying emission factors, process rates using best available data, determining permanent classification based on emission rates, determining applicable state and federal rules, writing an enforceable permit for the applicable rules, and then the step we are doing this evening, which is engaging the public for this participation process. Then, final action will be taken on the permit. Next slide. After the permit is issued, we are not done. Our compliance program kicks in. The proposed permit contains the following requirements to ensure compliance with the permit: An inspection and maintenance plan, monitoring and record keeping, reporting, source testing. The Division of Air Quality also conducts unannounced inspections to visually verify site operations and compliance. Next slide, please. The proposed asphalt plant is to be located at 3807 US Highway 2570 in Marshall. Specifically, the plant is proposed to be in the upper-left corner of this map provided. Next slide. These are drawings of the proposed asphalt plant. You can see haul roads, operations, et cetera, et cetera. Next slide. The permit application was received on February 13th, 2019, and then updated on April 22nd, 2019. Review of the emission rates and emission factors show that the asphalt plant has the potential to emit less than 100 tons per year of criteria pollutants, which are particulate matter, sulfur dioxide, nitrogen oxides, carbon monoxide, and volatile organic compounds. The plant also has the potential to emit less than 10 tons per year of any individual hazardous air pollutant and less than 25 tons per year of total hazardous air pollutants. Because potential emissions are below these thresholds, the plant is classified as a small facility. As such, an air permit is required for the proposed asphalt plant. Next slide. The process equipment includes a drum mix asphalt plant rated at 170 tons per hour maximum capacity, consisting of a dryer rated at 50 million BTU per hour, combusting ultra-low sulfur number-two fuel oil. This has a control device of a bag filter rated at 6,590 square feet of filter area. Also included on the permit list are two asphalt storage silos, 100 tons capacity each, a truck loadout operation, and a number-two fuel oil-fired tank heater rated at 1.41 million BTU per hour, also combusting ultra-low sulfur number-two fuel oil. Next slide. Operational limitations for the permit. Particulate emissions are kept below the 100-ton per year threshold by the Federal New Source Performance Standard, NSPS, I for asphalt plants. The federal standards are met by the use of the bag filter control device. The plant must conduct stack testing within 180 days of startup, and the facility will be limited to combusting only ultra-low sulfur number-two fuel oil. Next slide. Additional operational limitations include an annual asphalt production limit of 100,000 tons per year. The hourly production will be limited to 170 tons per hour by design of the plant. Daytime operations will be limited to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at 1,300 tons of asphalt per day. Nighttime operations will be limited from 6:00 PM to 3:00 AM and 400 tons of asphalt. If the plant operates during the day, they cannot operate at night. Next slide. Other equipment included as insignificant activities on the permit are two storage tanks, one for liquid asphalt and one for the ultra-low number-two fuel oil, both storage tanks. Next slide. This is a drawing, a rendering of a typical asphalt plant, including feed bins, the dryer, storage silos, the bag filter, storage tanks, et cetera. Next slide. This is a typical photograph of an asphalt plant. You can see silos, bag filter, drum mix, and material handling operations. Next slide, please. This is a photograph of a typical asphalt plant dryer where the aggregate and sand are heated and mixed with liquid asphalt. Next slide. This is a typical bag filter, the primary control device for the asphalt plant. Next slide. The permit requires a multitude of stipulations, and these include control device requirements, production limitations, road dust requirements, fuel limitations, visible dust, emissions limitations, et cetera. Next slide. Modeling was required for three toxic air pollutants from the asphalt plant itself: arsenic, benzene, and formaldehyde. All three of these modeled below their acceptable ambient levels. Next slide. The proposed asphalt plant is located within an area that also includes an aggregate quarry and a concrete batch plant. At the request of the public, air pollution dispersing modeling was conducted to include all three operations. Next slide. Site-wide modeling was conducted for three scenarios. The first-case scenario was for nitrogen oxides, sulfur dioxide, and carbon monoxide. All of these pollutants modeled below their national ambient air quality standards. Next slide. Particulate matter emissions were also modeled. These all modeled below their national ambient air quality standards for both daytime and nighttime operations. Next slide. The third-site modeling scenario was conducted for toxic air pollutants. These were modeled also below the acceptable ambient levels. Again, arsenic, benzene, formaldehyde, and an additional pollutant, nickel, was picked up. These pollutants are lower than the previous slide because modeling was done at the site-wide property boundary versus in the previous slide, which was for the asphalt plant only. All modeling results for these slides, again, are at the property boundary. Significantly lower impacts of all modeled pollutants were determined at the nearest residence, ball fields, childcare center, and the nursing home. Next slide. At this point, Matthew Porter of the Division of Air Quality Modeling Group will give an overview of the modeling.
Yeah, thank you, Patrick. Let me start my video. Okay, hi, everybody. Good evening. My name is Matt Porter, Meteorologist with the Air Quality Modeling Group. I conducted the modeling analysis of the combined emissions impacts from the proposed asphalt plant and the existing quarry and concrete batch plant operations. Here, I'll discuss some of the highlights of the modeling analysis. AIRMOD is currently the only regulatory dispersion model preferred by the U.S. EPA for evaluating air pollutant impacts from permitted facilities. Since its inception in the mid-1990s, the AIRMOD modeling system has undergone over 20 years of performance evaluation studies and model formulation updates, and over 10 modeling code software releases. And during this time, North Carolina DAQ has relied on AIRMOD for compliance demonstrations to support permit decisions under the Air Toxics and National Ambient Air Quality Standards programs at small, synthetic miner, and major Title V industrial sources of air pollution. And this is in all regions of North Carolina, from the mountains to the coastal plain. Before we get into the meteorology selected for the modeling, I'll discuss what basis we used for determining the appropriateness of the meteorological data. In terms of the worst-case air quality impacts modeled at the asphalt plant site, the controlling micro-meteorological conditions expected depend primarily on the frequency and strength of stagnation conditions. These conditions are characterized by periodic episodes, for example, during nighttime and early morning hours when light winds and temperature inversions contribute to decreased atmospheric mixing and dispersion of the air pollutant emissions. The objective of selecting the best meteorological data really came down to identifying available hourly data sets that would adequately represent these worst-case controlling conditions and at the same time meet data quality criteria required by the regulations for dispersion modeling. That said, we selected the EPA 2013 through 2015 Weather Research Forecast or WORF modeling data set for the dispersion modeling analysis because it adequately captures the frequency and strength of the worst-case controlling conditions. This data set is actually selected from the 12-by-12-kilometer WORF grid cell centered near Jupiter, North Carolina, not too far away from the project site. The WORF modeling data set is based on state-of-the-art atmospheric physics in addition to being weighted by land-based meteorological stations located near the proposed asphalt plant site. And when we compared the WORF data to the Asheville Airport, the WORF hourly data shows that low winds are similar and that temperature inversions, in fact, are more frequently and stronger in the WORF data. This indicates that the WORF data provides an adequate level of representativeness as well as an adequate margin of safety for modeling worst-case impacts of all proposed and existing emissions activities across the entire site. And finally, given the complex river valley terrain surrounding the project site, enhanced one-meter-resolution terrain data was processed for input to AIRMOD. This data was collected by the U.S. Geological Survey during laser remote sensing surveys conducted in the area between 2001 and 2003. This higher-resolution terrain data improves the elevations used by AIRMOD to determine plume dispersion and ground-level concentrations at all receptors located at the property line, river valley, and ridge lines surrounding the site. That's it. Next slide. I'll hand it back over to Patrick.
Thank you, Matt. So to close out this presentation, the draft permit, draft review, permit applications, and all public documents are available at the below-listed website. The public comment period closes on May 5th, 2021, at 5:00. If you wish to make public comments, please see the email address below, and please type in Madison Asphalt in the subject line. Next slide. Again, my name is Patrick Ballard. I am the Permits Coordinator for the Asheville Regional Office. Contact information here is also displayed for Brendan Davy, Regional Supervisor for the Asheville Regional Office, Heather Carter, your Hearing Officer tonight, and Matthew Porter of the Air Quality Modeling Group. And that will conclude my presentation, and thank you for joining tonight.
Thank you, Patrick and Matt. At this time, we will hear from those who have pre-registered to provide oral comments this evening. When your name is called, our WebEx host will enable you to unmute your microphone so you can provide your comments. To ensure our records are complete, please clearly state your name and who you are representing. Your comments will be recorded, so please speak loudly and clearly toward your microphone or telephone. Please do not start speaking until you have unmuted your microphone. It is critically important for the audio clarity of your comments that you turn off any speakers that you have that can create feedback. If there is significant feedback on your line, we may need to mute your call and attempt to come back to you later. If we call your name but cannot hear you, please check to see if you are muted on the WebEx screen on your computer. If you are having audio issues, try a different method of audio connection within WebEx or use the "call me" feature to have WebEx call your personal telephone. If we still cannot hear you, we will proceed to the next registered speaker, but we'll call your name again at the end of the hearing. I will do my best to pronounce your names correctly and apologize in advance for any errors. We will now begin taking oral comments. The first speaker is Alan Bassist, and the second speaker will be Peter Fland.
Can you hear me?
Alan, your line has been unmuted. You can go ahead and speak now.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate the presentation and the material as well as explaining to us much of the work that's been done in advance. My primary concern, and it was a concern years ago when the first issue came up and we had a public hearing in the AB Tech building, and I was an employee at NOE at the time, a climatologist. He said, "I can't think of a worse site in the county to build this asphalt plant." It drains directly into the French Broad River. And I know that you spoke about the modeling. I live in the hills of Jupiter, and I know the difference in the turbulence here, the dispersion here, and what happens way down at the beginning of the canyon that feeds into the town of Marshall. What is occurring is that pollutants that accumulate in that canyon naturally drain. It's called cold air drainage. As the inversion develops, that cold air pours more and more into the river. And the model, as it's conveyed right now, shows the dispersion similar to what happens in my house up in the hills of Jupiter compared to what happens down in the gorge of the French Broad River. There, the air is trapped, and the model shows that every year, every hour in the model, it resets and then recalculates, as I understand. But that air doesn't disperse. That air doesn't go anywhere. That air stays in the valley. It accumulates, and the toxins along with it accumulate. Then I started studying more, "Well, what about the toxins and the radicals and the nitrogen oxides? What happens to that as far as the air quality, the people down in the valley breathing it?" And I realized that what happens is that the inversion, which people can see visually by the fog that's trapped in the river valley morning after morning, particularly in the fall, but can happen any time of the year, that fog is basically, then becomes a soup in which solar radiation from the clear skies above shining down on the fog becomes a toxic layer that's then basically the air in which people are going to be breathing until that dispersion of air from aloft captures that inversion layer, that air that's trapped in the river valley until that air can get down from aloft and mix with the inversion and pull the pollutants out, like your model shows will happen. Then the air is safe, but it's not safe during the time that many times the inversion is taking place, and people are still living there. And people are going to have to breathe that air, and it's going to impact health. It's going to impact livelihoods, and it impacts the community, and there's no benefit to the community. It's a net loss, and it's the entryway to Madison County, you know, the jewel of the Blue Ridge. The first thing they're going to see when they enter Madison County is this asphalt plant coming out of this artificial rock canyon spewing out smoke.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bassist, your time is up. We need to move on to the next speaker if you can wrap up, please.
Okay, so basically, this is what they're going to see, and this is how we're going to be introducing them to the town of Marshall, which is under the duress of this asphalt plant. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bassist. Mr. Peter Fland is our next speaker, followed by Ashley St. Martin.
Peter, if you have called in by telephone, if you would, please press star 3 so I can identify your line and unmute you so you can go ahead and make your oral statement. Peter, you have been unmuted. You can make your oral statements now.
I would like to raise an issue that is totally, in a way, outside of what is happening today, but is very critical to it. And this is something that's very different. It's called return on investments. What we have in this matter is that Marshall Asphalt is building a plant. It is building a plant that has a high capacity to deliver asphalt. Yet their working statements, which calls for a total of 14 weeks of usage of that facility annually, seems rather specious because there's no return on investment. How can you build an asphalt plant that is the size that it is and only operate it for 14 weeks? And so I suspect there is something else afoot. But if you compute all of the productivity of the rotary drum, the recycled wrap, the loading potential, and compare it to the use of 14 weeks, you'll find continually that they're only using 25% to 27% of the capacity of that asphalt plant, which says to me that something else is going to happen. Someone wants that plant, and that seems to be a typical issue that goes around the asphalt industry. Somebody starts it in a rural area. The assumption is that rural people cannot really defend it that well. And the next thing you know, someone is going to buy this plant. And then they're going to try to push the usage of that plant to full capacity because everybody wants return on investments. And so I'm asking you to reconsider all forms of modeling in terms of this plant being used and available for use 24 hours a day all year long, regardless of what the application says. The application clearly says 14 weeks, five days per week, eight hours a day. But that only presents 27% of the potential volume of this plant. And I think what is happening here is something that is, I will describe it as specious, and I think there are other players involved that we may or may not know about. But this plant is not what it says it's going to be. It's, you just look at the numbers. If I was a businessman, would I build something? If I was a businessman, would I build something at the quality and volume that this has and then just use it 25%? To save what? I mean, they're alleging that this will save the cost of asphalt. But regardless, they're going to have to pay for that asphalt. They are not generating real income with this plant compared to where they could get other asphalt. So I'm asking you to reconsider the entire business because this is going to be ultimately something that is going to be operating or seeking to operate 24 hours a day, 52 weeks a year, or those days when it's capable of operating depending on cold. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fland. We appreciate your comments. The next speaker is Ashley St. Martin, followed by Douglas Brugman.
Ashley, I believe I have unmuted your line. Please go ahead and make your oral statements now. Ashley, if you've called in by phone, please press star three to indicate to me so I can unmute your line so you can make your statements. Heather, we will have to move on to the next person.
Okay, so the next speaker is Douglas Brugman, followed by Jim Tibbetts.
Doug, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead and make your comments now.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I live at 606 Coach Road. My property line is less than 700 feet from the proposed plant. The emissions stack will actually end at the age my property begins. The US EPA agrees that we don't understand the long-term health risks of asphalt emissions. Some data on worker exposure is available, and lung cancer is certainly an issue. But exposure pathways between workers and homeowners are completely different. For example, do workers maintain a garden near production facilities for 30 years? I bet you could find 30 gardens within 1,000 feet of asphalt plants across North Carolina to collect data to address this concern. So I and others have shown that asphalt plants lower property values. Therefore, the open market disagrees that the North Carolina air quality standards are sufficient for bike safety. In analysis by Armstrong et al., testing lung catching risk from PPHs across 30 cities. Given the industry standard for exposure to PPHs in the asphalt industry today, over 20 years, that would lead to a 31% increase in lung cancer risk. Our community has found evidence of systematic bias in your modeling estimates. Among them, the failure estimates to include the influence of atmospheric conversions. The memo by Matthew Porter does not offer adequate responses to our concerns. The model uses the distribution of weather data from one site on one date to demonstrate an extreme. So to say that demonstrates the distributions used in the model is scientifically misleading and grossly inappropriate. Results in the NCDQ regulatory review should indicate top and limit confidence limits for all results to provide simple scientific credibility. The fitted factors for the regulatory model came with estimates of error, but the consequences of those errors are being ignored in your recommendations. Another source of systematic bias was the selection of the Great Smoky Mountain National Park to determine atmospheric background concentrations. I wish I could afford to live next to the Great Smoky Mountain National Park, but my hair is not that clean. More realistic background concentrations would likely indicate that the proposed plant would violate air quality standards. In summary, the only thing your regulatory review proves is that it's okay to build a hot mixed asphalt plant next to the Great Smoky Mountain National Park that has weather patterns similar to Jupiter Road, and the predicted emissions model represents the absolute truth with no error. And that the influence of emissions on human health does not matter. This is kangaroo science that favors big industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brugman. The next speaker will be Jim Tibbetts, followed by Tim Malone.
Jim, if you have called in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line so I can unmute you so you can make your comments. Jim, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead and make your comments now.
Great, thank you. I want to focus on gathering onsite data. If we had had this from day one before the Board of Adjustment Hearing, I think there would have been a clear indication that odors and toxins could drift downtown to Marshall. And I think if you do that with onsite data today, you will find that is true. And we could have avoided, they could have denied the permit right then, and it would have been a done deal, irrefutable. What? Possibility of odor? Oh, it has to be objectionable to do something about it, which means burning nose and throat? Yeah, I think we'd have passed on that, and I don't think there would have been an objection or a court appeal if that had been the case, but it wasn't. And so, you know, we've been doing weather stations, $150. They transmit Wi-Fi. Weather Underground uses them. So to hear that the price tag is $200,000 for a weather station, I think is way out of line. And it creates an artificial barrier for why you can't do onsite data, and I think that's wrong. Further, you know, the asphalt plant permit has to go get a year's worth of data. Well, in our position, we don't have to do that. You could do one day in a good inversion, and you would have your data, and I don't think you would permit this plant. And so I think in all fairness, with all the uncertainty with your modeling and some of these data values that come out of nowhere, I think you need to deny this permit until we have some certainty about what the impact is going to be. Remember Burnsville. They had a horrible experience, and nothing ever happened until the plant closed and moved down the road. So that's how I feel about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tibbetts. Next speaker is Tim Malone, followed by James Goodman.
Tim, if you've dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify you so I can unmute you so you can make your oral comments. Heather will have to move to the next person.
All right, so Mr. James Goodman is our next registered speaker, followed by Barbara Zimmerman.
James, if you would, please press star three if you dial them by phone so I can identify you. James? Okay.
All right. So we'll move on to Barbara Zimmerman, followed by Elizabeth Gullum.
Barbara, if you would, please press, if you dial them by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line. We'll have to move on to the next person.
Okay, Ms. Elizabeth Gullum is the registered speaker next, followed by Patty Evans.
Elizabeth, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead and make your comments now.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Gullum. I'm a founding member of Sustainable Madison. We hired the lawyer, raised the funds, and built our successful, successfully proven case before our county board of adjustment, a board of adjustment that was comprised of citizens of Madison County. This board ruled unanimously that this plant was a danger to our community. We proved our case before them, and so we wonder why if our own county residents have voted unanimously to deny this permit, why the DEQ believes that the only people who could vote against this, which is our county board of adjustment, did vote against it. Our small community will be adversely affected by this plant. You have the authority and the responsibility to keep us safe. And so I would say to the DEQ that the government exists to serve the people and not the corporations. And you know that a large corporation, possibly the largest corporation, will no doubt look to purchase and expand this facility. We don't understand the DEQ reasoning for choosing your Tier Two modeling. That combined with a background concentration of nine, which is the Smoky Mountain National Park's baseline air, that is not the kind of air that we have over Madison County. We are 18 miles from Asheville, and as you well know, Asheville does not enjoy the air quality of the Great Smoky Mountain National Park. And the bottom line is if you would choose the Tier One modeling, as you have in many, many asphalt cases, this asphalt plant would be well over the limit. The REEDs have agreed to use a lower sulfur emitting fuel, but there is no guarantee of that. It is not in their application. It is not in their permit. Yes, they've agreed to it, but I'm wondering who will actually oversee and make sure that they comply with that. We, as a community, have played by the rules. We did the work. We raised the money needed to have a successful outcome. Our county board of commissioners let us down by listening to bad advice from their lawyers. Please don't let our community down by issuing this permit that will have such a devastating effect on our way of life and on our beloved river. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gullum. Next registered speaker is Patty Evans, followed by Laura Evans.
Patty, your line has been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statements now.
Okay, thank you. My name is Patty Evans. I live at Sweet Pea Farm, which is on the ridge directly across from the quarry. I can stand on my property and look down into the quarry directly. I hear the quarry every day. I hear the beeping horns, the machinery. I see the dust whenever there's an explosion. I know that that quarry was there before I moved here, and so I've learned to live with it. But I did not choose this property to live next to an asphalt plant. And I do not think it's fair that I have to put up with all of the quarry inconveniences and noises and the silica that gets dust in the air. I shouldn't have to breathe all of that in and now put up with an asphalt plant too. That is undue and unfair. I feel like you guys really need to look at your modeling analysis again. You need to put up some weather stations right around here, not in Jupiter. Because you know what? The weather in downtown Marshall is different from the weather up here on this ridge. And I think you need to do your work. Do it better, because I feel like you're just making do. And I don't like it when somebody's going to make do with my community and not make good choices based on sound data. And the whole idea of using the Smoky Mountains, I mean, what are you thinking? You need to do better, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Excuse me. The next speaker is Laura Evans, followed by Hayes Finley.
Good evening.
Laura, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My property is located at 285 Cabin Hollow Drive in Marshall. I am adjacent to the quarry property and ultimately will be adjacent to the asphalt plant. I'm located on the ridge just across the river from the quarry. I can see directly into the quarry from my kitchen window. I'm opposed to the construction of an asphalt plant on the same site where a quarry and a cement plant already exist. I testified at the Madison County Board of Adjustment Hearing and was pleased that they voted unanimously to deny the zoning request to build the asphalt plant. Yet the possibility of an asphalt plant next to my property continues. I have read through the North Carolina Division of Air Quality Application Review and would like to emphasize some of the findings. The multi-site modeling impact analysis stated that the preliminary site-wide modeling was compliant for several criteria of air pollutants, but demonstrated potential concerns for particulate matter during full plant production under certain meteorological conditions. The potential for concern was significant enough for a recommendation to limit the hours of day and nighttime operation and to ensure that a daytime operation was not followed by a nighttime operation. This is the main issue that we have tried to emphasize from the beginning of our efforts to oppose the construction of the asphalt plant at the quarry. The proposed location is both topologically and meteorologically unique. Any modeling will not give a true picture of the resultant pollutants that the combined operation of three plants will create on this unique site. Testing after the fact will no doubt show yours and our concerns to be reality. Then what happens? Will the asphalt plant be closed down? How long will the process take to close the asphalt plant while we breathe these deadly pollutants on a daily basis? I respectfully request that the Division of Air Quality deny the request from Madison Asphalt to build their plant on the quarry site. I believe it's imperative that you put extra emphasis on the unique topography and meteorology of the proposed site. I'm asking you to consider the health and the safety of the community that lives in the surrounding area of the existing quarry and cement plant and deny the request of the asphalt plant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. The next registered speaker is Hayes Finley, followed by Francesca Garapoli.
Hayes, your line has been unmuted. Go ahead and make your statements now.
Hi, good evening. This is Hayes Finley. I represent Madison Asphalt, the applicant, and we have no comments at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Finley. The next registered speaker is Francesca Garapoli, followed by Rachel Maeta.
This is Francesca Garapoli.
Go ahead, Francesca.
And I thank you, Pat and Matt and Heather and everyone who is here from this passionate place. You know, I'm a resident right down the road, happens to be south, happens to be just a few miles down wind, which means the prevailing wind, which usually comes from the west and north, is going to blow right into our property. And I represent the other homeowners in this area. Beautiful people who have moved here from other places in North Carolina. They've moved here from out of state, some from other countries, and they came here for the beauty of North Carolina. I could speak a lot about science. I'm in the health industry and a trained doctor. I can tell you all about respiratory issues. And in this time of COVID, where respiratory issues are so much in our presence, the idea of an asphalt plant that is going to spew the pollutants and the hazardous waste that is clearly laid out is a sin, really, and it hurts us. I mean, I almost want to cry, to tell you the truth, even thinking that this is possible in this beautiful area where we're 18 miles away or so close to the busiest national park in the world. And people come here, I mean, bigger than Yellowstone, bigger than any national park. We have the Great Smokies here, and people come for the beauty. And if that isn't the most important asset, the natural beauty, I could talk about all the science you want, and I could talk a lot about modeling. And we know from COVID how hardworking scientists and good mathematicians work on great modeling, just as you guys did. You worked really hard, but we all know from modeling that there is lots of room for error in this natural world. I experienced an asphalt plant in the past. We fought it. We get all the good data, and we still lost. So what we had to do is put up with this insanity, get a mass spectrometry, mass spectrometer, to then prove that all the modeling was false and we ended up closing the plant. We don't need to go through that here. We can shortcut that, find a better location, and realize that people are going to put up a massive effort to stop this, even if it gets passed. And with mass spectrometry, you can see the data in real time, and that's what we use as evidence to shut down the one before. So please, think about people like me and the hundreds of people that I'm representing who are too shy to come talk, who live in the area and will be impacted in an adverse way, especially the children. So thank you for all you're doing, and please consider our heartfelt plea. Peace.
Thank you, Mr. Garapoli. The next registered speaker is Rachel Maeta, followed by Tanya Schur.
Rachel, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead and make your statements now.
Hello, my name is Rachel Maeta, and I live and own a house and run a business within two miles of the proposed site. I am very concerned. Every morning, we have dense fog. We call it the cotton ball. You can't see a few feet in front of you. We live in a very unique place. You can't see a few feet in front of you. We live in a very unique place, definitely different than Jupiter. I'm a mother. I have three boys. The youngest is three months old. They all have developing lungs. My husband has asthma. We live in a neighborhood with many children. Our youngest is three months. Our oldest person in our neighborhood is eighty-two. So I have a lot of concerns around how this would affect their health of my growing children. But I also run a business. I run a preschool, so there are children. We serve fifteen to twenty children per year, twenty families per year. We have twelve kids a day up here at the preschool. They also have developing lungs. They're three to five years old. I'm very concerned for them and their health. But as well, I'm concerned about the livelihood of our business because I supply income for teachers year-round, substitute teachers, cleaners, landscapers, and my own livelihood as well. So I wonder, of course, how this is going to affect the children. We're mostly outside most of the day. We're within two miles. And also how it's going to affect the livelihood. Are parents going to want to send their children to a preschool that's mostly outside within two miles? So that's a great concern for me. It's a great concern for my family. It's a great concern for my business, the children that come there, the families, the families that I employ, and then also the entire neighborhood. I would like a further study because as many people have noticed, as have mentioned, it is a very unique place. I've lived here for nine years in the same house, and it can't be compared to what happens on Jupiter Road or what's happening in the Smoky Mountains. Even just a little, a couple miles down the road is a whole different microclimate. And I love, love, love this community, and we deserve better, and we deserve more research before going head and permitting something like this, something so permanent to come into our community that affects people like my family and like the young children in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayetta. The next registered speaker is Tanya Schur, followed by Kate Sanoskus.
Tanya, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead and make your statements now.
Hello. Hello, my name is Tanya Schur. And I live within a radius of two miles from the plant, asphalt plant. There is enough evidence that there is enough evidence that the asphalt plant will terribly compromise the air quality in Marshall and the river. And the compromise air quality means compromised health for all local residents. We hope that the asphalt plant will not be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schur. The next speaker is Kate Sanoskus, followed by Vivian Long.
Kate, if you used telephone to dial in, please press star three to indicate your line so I can unmute you. Kate? We may have to move on to the next person.
Okay, so Ms. Vivian Long, followed by Chris Silva.
Vivian, if you have, I believe, just one second. Vivian, I believe I have unmuted your line. Go ahead and make your statement.
Can you hear me?
Yes, is this Vivian?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I'm Vivian Long, representing myself. I live on Sam's Road in Marshall, a mile downriver from the proposed plant. I have submitted a written comment with more detail. I'm worried about the considerable impacts to environmental quality that we may suffer from plant operations. The environment directly affects health status and plays a major role in quality of life, years of healthy life lived, and health disparities. Along with air pollution, other impacts on environmental quality include potential water pollution, noise, traffic, odors, and fire hazards, which are more easily perceived even if less quantifiable. My main concerns include the ambient levels of air quality. The total emissions level for the county paint a different picture than those used in the dispersion analysis. Weather data for the modeling came from locations with very different topography. Inversions behave differently in narrow valleys than in wide ones. The very important surface winds and temperatures at the plant site are defined by the steep sides and granite basin, which cause cooler morning conditions that delay the morning breakup of the inversion. The winds created within the inversion can be difficult to predict. Operation of the plant during hours of inversion is unacceptable. The analysis states, "Conditions at the facility are influenced by strong vertical temperature inversions that would occur during evening, nighttime, and early morning hours." We know the inversion will cause PM concentrations to accumulate. EPA studies state that cold air drainage begins shortly after an inversion forms and is most prevalent in regions with gently to steeply rolling topography or mountain valleys. Inversions in these valleys can result in major air pollution or smog alerts because any smoke or other odors are trapped in the cold air pool. A two-mile-per-hour level wind can bring particulates and odors to my property by seven-thirty a.m. and for the next three hours, given the start time of seven a.m. If the plant is operating at night, it will be operating during the inversion. Initial testing happens when equipment is new, with a retest only required in ten years. We could be poisoned by degraded equipment or lax practices for nine years between tests. The odors, whether we suffer foul odors, depends on the effects of inversions. How are odor complaints handled and what triggers a response or shutdown of the facility? Do we have to prove that the odors are affecting our health by getting sick? Surely, the goal is to prevent illness, not wait until the community is sickened. I ask that no permit be issued until weather is monitored and analyzed onsite over a period of a year as there are seasonal changes. That a background ambient level of PMs be used that is more in line with reality. Analysis should include effects of quarry blasting on plant emissions along with idling truck emissions. If a permit is issued, the plant not be allowed to operate between sunset and ten a.m., the inversion hours. If permitted, there should be more frequent testing of emissions and compliance by impartial agents. Frequent complaints of foul odor should trigger closure until the problem is investigated and resolved. This is a true environmental quality issue and a big worry for the community. To prevent the well-documented adverse health effects of noise, the plant should not be allowed to operate at all during the night or on weekends. It should shut down at five p.m. so that residents can enjoy their suppers in peace.
Ms. Long, we thank you for your comments, but your time has expired. Please wrap up.
Okay, and I just wanted to say that an official analysis should be made to determine whether water use and containment will affect aquifers and water quality. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Our next speaker is Chris Silva, followed by Janice Coverdale.
Chris, if you have dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line. Okay. Let's go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Thank you to everyone at DEQ. DAQ, my name is Chris Silva, and I chair an environmental nonprofit located in Asheville called Cleanup Project. And our focus is a lot on the biosphere. We cover solar radiation management. So I'm familiar with particulates and air pollution. I actually found out about this Marshall asphalt plant not too long ago, just a couple months ago, from a local Realtor. And I had been traveling into Marshall to do business. I buy products from farms and local businesses downtown. And I heard about the asphalt plant, and honestly, I jumped right in because this is like some of the other people that have made comments. This is pretty like open and shut, right? My position is that this permit must be denied, especially due to the flawed modeling that was used. And I think that modeling at the location is going to produce some completely different results. Plus, after hearing the presentation, I wonder why the modeling incorporated certain specific years, like two thousand thirteen to fifteen and two thousand one to two thousand three for the terrain, and why not other years? That's a certain question. So the whole modeling, and if that's your foundation that you're standing on, that's pretty shaky, if not no foundation at all. So, you know, I think in this case, too, there's precedent, right? Paul Moon from Asheville Citizen Times covered that other plants that wanted to install on a concrete as well as a quarry operation were denied. I think that that's precedence right there. According to Clear Sky Madison, the data used, like we talked about, is really suspect, different locations, different types of effects. In terms of, you know, the type-one, type-two standards, nitrogen oxide, picking the lesser one versus the more accurate one, that would probably straight up deny the permit. In terms of other potential conflicts, there's conflict in the permit itself, like normal business operations, seven to five, except when a state or local government needs to. But I looked at the ten-year plan for NC DOT, and it looks like there's a lot of highways being populated or, you know, planned out for the area. So I see this, you know, I wonder if this plant is going to be producing, like other people have said, twenty-four-seven, which will totally be different emission standards there. And then another, another little tiny aspect, but they talk about a device supposed to catch and liquefy the polluted steam, maybe making it more environmentally friendly, but it's so vague, there's no details on the permit. And it hasn't been done anywhere else in the surrounding plants, so that's an issue. There's strong opposition against it, you've seen by the litigation. I know there's various stakeholders, Sustainable Madison, Clear Sky Madison, Town of Marshall, the Macquarie Stone, Mountain True, the River is So Important, River Keepers.
Thank you, Ms. Silva.
Yeah, yeah, let me just finish up here. I'm currently doing best practices, but I think the resolution is to deny the permit, but call on all stakeholders to get together and figure out where is this going to be a better fit.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Silva. All right, we will go on to Janice Coverdale, followed by Hannah Harden.
Janice, if you have dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line. We may have to move on to the next speaker.
Okay, so we will move on to Hannah Harden, followed by Gretchen Simpson.
Hannah, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead and make your comments now.
Thank you. Hello, I hope you all are doing well today. My name is Dr. Hannah Wallen-Harden. I am a lifelong Madison County resident. Mine is about eight years at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill and living in various places around the country. I've been a member of the Madison County Board of Health for several years. I bought my home off of Tillery Branch in two thousand nine. It's within a mile of the proposed asphalt plant site. I bought my home when I was a young, single professional. And when I bought it, I wasn't purchasing a home in the middle of a major industrial park. My home is in the middle of a community, in the midst of a hundred other homes and families. I am now happily married and mommed three precious little boys. This is our home, where we have pets and chickens, where we homeschool our boys. We absolutely love it here. I wanted to put a face with the names of the community members who are against this plant, but it's not possible in this forum. We are a family of five. This is us. We are one of hundreds of families that this plant will negatively impact. My husband and I are healthcare workers who have been fighting COVID on the front for over a year now. Our home should be a place of rest, of peace, of refreshment. But because of this proposed asphalt plant, our home has been anything but. We come home and our worry turns from COVID to asphalt plant. We just ask that you put yourselves in our shoes. This proposed plant is going in our front and backyards. There are a thousand places in Madison County that this plant could go and not affect a soul. No one would even know it existed, other than those who needed to know that it exists. So just put yourselves in our shoes. Imagine it's going in your front yard or your parents' front yard where you grew up. Imagine that it's going across the street from the nursing home where your beloved grandmother or grandfather lives. It's essentially going to trap them and the other residents with the toxic odors and the fumes, and they can't escape. Imagine going across the street from your child's daycare where the children, they can't go out and play and enjoy the breeze and sunshine because it's too dangerous for their little lungs to breathe. This is our reality. This is where this plant is proposed to go, in the midst of us, in the midst of our everyday lives. It's going across the street from a major river that eventually flows to the Gulf of Mexico. When a disaster happens at this proposed plant, it won't just affect my neighbors and I. It's going to flow all the way to the Gulf. When you go to vote on this permit, remember us. Remember our names. Remember the unimaginable position we have been forced into. Please remember us, the families and the community that have built our lives around this area. We are going to be the ones breathing these toxic fumes. There could not be a worse location for this proposed plant. I pray that your decision is one that will benefit all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Harden. The next speaker is Gretchen Simpson, followed by Emily Sontag.
Gretchen, if you have dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line. Gretchen? We'll have to move on to the next person.
Okay, Emily Sontag, followed by Jackie Dolamore.
Emily, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead and make your comments now.
Can you hear me?
Just a slight echo, just one second. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, okay, okay. Oh, that is bad. Let me see what I can do. Is that better?
It looks like you're dialed in twice, I believe. If your audio continues this way, maybe we can come back to you later. Heather, is that okay?
Is there a way to get off of the second thing? I don't show myself on here twice.
At this time, if you would, if you have, if you would, just put in chat to the panelist, either your phone number, we can have WebEx call you, or you can use a call-me feature on WebEx to call you to join in.
I believe her echo was gone. If you'd like to proceed with comments or try it one more time, I didn't hear.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So, living near the quarry, my family has been deeply affected by its production. And I can personally attest to the fact that just because an industrial source is operating within its allowable EPA limits, it doesn't mean it won't affect the health of those living around it. I can tell you that many times my children and I have had to run inside coughing after the quarry blast and our house is engulfed with silica and rock dust, and we continue coughing for many hours. I've called the DEQ to make complaints, and after weeks of trying to follow up, I found out that the quarry is always within its seismic limits. This shows that even though the EPA is regulating what the quarry should be doing, the topography of our unique location is such that those of us living around this industrial source are affected heavily by its operation, even when it's within its permit limits. As you've heard, this quarry and its plant's, the plant's location is very unique in its topography because surrounding it on all sides are ridges with hundreds of homes that will sit just above the smokestacks. You've done modeling that uses data taken from Jupiter, which has completely different weather patterns and is not on the river basin. You've used the Great Smoky Mountains monitor for your ambient background levels. When this location is bordered by a heavily trafficked trucking route, an active train line, hundreds of houses, the printback facility, businesses, schools, fairgrounds, farms, and a downtown, which has only just begun thriving after years of dormancy. To accurately reflect the plant's emissions, the background data should better reflect this plant's location amongst a busy population. As someone who lives on a ridge at an elevation just above the quarry, I can tell you that during several months of the year, I witnessed daily inversions over the quarry in the river basin. I can tell you that they usually last until ten a.m., but they also form in the middle of the day after a substantial rainstorm has passed. The DEQ can't expect the residents who live surrounding this quarry to trust data collected from monitors at other locations when we're witness to the unique topography and climate of this location and firsthand know how this weather, this river basin, and this topography already subjects us to health effects from a quarry that is operating within its EPA limits. that is operating within its EPA limits. We're asking you to collect data from this location, install weather monitors at the ridge line of the quarry to accurately show us that we will be safe and will not have added effects from this plant's operation. It's not asking too much. It's just asking you to do the adequate, adequate amount of data collection that actually reflects this location, not a rolling hills and valley location in Jupiter, or the Great Smoky National Mountains for background ambient emissions. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Sontag. Our next speaker is Jackie Dolamore, followed by Melissa Big.
Hello.
Jackie, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Jackie. I live on Roberts Hill Road, just outside of downtown Marshall. And I moved here two years ago, just when this asphalt plant was kind of first being fought. And I was, I questioned whether I should move to Marshall because of the asphalt plant, even though, you know, I know there are environmental standards, but you don't always know if they will have a long-term effect on your health. You know, you could have cancer like 20 years later, and then it's like, oh, sorry. So I, I can attest personally that it is a concern if you're moving to the town. And, but I moved here anyway because I was very attracted by just the beauty, the community, the thriving nature of Marshall, which I had moved here from another small town in the mountains in Maryland that was kind of dead. Very cute, but pretty dead. Then I moved to Marshall, and it's very charming, and like, there's a sense of liveliness. So I also have this kind of, I, I, I wonder what the benefit is to the community to have an asphalt plant in a place that people want to be and want to come. So I mainly just wonder, you know, if the town stinks, are people really going to want to like, be hanging out at our restaurants, coming to our businesses, staying in our, you know, little family-owned places that are just so charming? So that's, along with many of the other things that have been said, that is my main thought that I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments. The next speaker is Melissa Big, followed by Dee Godfrey-Cavers.
Melissa, go ahead, your line has been unmuted.
Thank you for this forum, I appreciate it. All respect to those in this department whose job it is to evaluate relevant current data, then attempt to predict outcome. I have to conclude, the modeling choice doesn't reflect the unique and complex location. We may be a rural county, but the proposed site is in a more populated, active, and thriving location. We heard prolific amounts of testimony from scientists, engineers, public safety officers, farmers, nurses, doctors, all in agreement on the detrimental impact at the proposed location. Our county and town voted unanimously against approval at this site because of the risks. Other towns shared their stories with us of the aftermath that occurred when an asphalt plant was built. Their information provides an important data point for the process. And that is, all numbers and formulas available cannot predict what a healthy outcome looks like. But certainly, they know what an unhealthy outcome looks like, smells like, tastes like, feels like. And this project, and should by any chance this project be approved, the very least that could be done is a before and after evaluation. This is the only way we can know the truth. This would also provide an opportunity for up-to-date data and modeling. Madison County residents are at a high risk of negative consequences prominently altering lives and homesteads. Please attach that in your calculation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Big. The next speaker is Dee Godfrey-Cavers, or Cavers, followed by Bob Lee.
Godfrey-Cavers, if you would, please press star three to indicate, so I can unmute your line. To move to Bob Lee.
Okay, so Mr. Bob Lee, followed by Anne Talton.
Hi, this is Bob Lee. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to share my concern with it from perspective, you know, with the, the inversions and stuff on the river. I started working some as a raft guide in 1980. So I've seen it quite a few days where the, the weather is pretty unique along that river. Also kind of a fun story, many years ago, PY Sawyer was burning some marijuana out at the island. And I remember coming through town on my motorcycle, you could barely see from one end of town to the other, it was so thick. Just kind of a fun little thing, give you an idea what the weather can do in that valley. We have rental properties on the river that we would not be able to attract any customers to these properties if there's the nasty smell of an asphalt plant. So that's from a personal perspective, plus the folks that we employ as a means for keeping those businesses operating. So there's a ripple effect there. Tourism is a huge, important part of Madison County. And, you know, we've heard some good speakers present how some of the, the climatic data, et cetera, could be improved on. And I just wanted to speak out in opposition. Please do not issue a permit for this plant in this location. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Lee. The next speaker is Anne Talton, followed by Tim and Lisa Sullivan.
Anne, if you have joined us by telephone, please press star three, so I can identify your line. Anne? Okay, we'll have to move on to the next person.
So, Tim and Lisa Sullivan?
Tim, your line, and Lisa, your line has been unmuted. Go ahead.
Yes, we just wanted, we are moving to the area in a few years. We've already, we're buying property there, and we are concerned, as, we'd just like to add our voices to the community that we hope to be a part of soon, and voice our concern with how damaging and, and how concerning this, this plant, how detrimental it could be to the community, to the future livelihood of the community as far as the, as any businesses that might be thinking about moving to the area. And just wanted to, to add our voices to the others that have spoken already in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, Rahat, let's circle back to some of the ones that we called earlier that did not speak, to see if they have since joined us, or have been able to make themselves audible. Ashley St. Martin?
Again, if, Ashley, if you have dialed in by phone, if you would, please press star three, so I can identify your line. But we, I don't see any indication for Ashley.
Okay, how about Tim Malone?
Tim, if you would, please press star three, if you've joined us by phone, so I can identify your line. Tim? Okay, we'll probably move on.
How about Mr. James Goodman?
James, if you have joined us by phone, please press star three. We'll have to move on.
All right, Ms. Barbara Zimmerman?
Ms. Zimmerman, if you would, please press star three if you have dialed in by phone. We'll have to.
Okay, let's go to Kate Sinaskas.
Kate, if you would, if you've joined us by phone, please press star three. We'll have to move on.
How about Ms. Janice Coverdale?
Janice, if you would, if you've joined us by phone, please press star three. We'll have to move on to Gretchen.
That's right, Gretchen Simpson.
Ms. Simpson, if you've joined us by phone, please press star three, where I can identify your line. We'll have to move on.
Godfrey-Cavers?
Godfrey-Cavers, if you've joined us by phone, please press star three, so I can identify your line. We'll have to move on.
And the last registered speaker that we did not hear from is Anne Talton.
Anne, I have unmuted your line. Go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful, thank you. I apologize for the technical difficulty earlier. Good evening, thank you. This is Dr. Anne Talton, and I greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak at this public hearing. And do, I do respect and appreciate all the work that has gone in so far. And I just would like to add comments that there still needs to be work that needs to be done. I'm a property owner and a business owner in Madison County, as well as Marshall. And I came to Madison County and Marshall in 1990 because of the incredibly beautiful, unspoiled beauty and the wonderful people. I love the area, and I strongly support it, that takes into consideration health, economic, and environmental longevity. The proposed asphalt plant is a threat to all three of these important aspects of life. I would just ask that you please, the folks that are in the regulatory authority bodies, deny this permit for 12 months. We know that the county and city has already gone through denial of this permit. My plea to you is to collect data from the site for four seasons. The data collection that's happened at this point is inadequate and does not provide the correct interpretation and evidence to really evaluate the site for the toxic impact for health in the residents, for health of the river, and health for the county and for the city of Marshall. Please run data based on full capacity. As was already stated, 14% or 27% capacity is not realistic. And a worst-case scenario, which means 100%, 24 hours a day, needs to be also weighed into the evaluation of this outcome. And please look at the Burnsville example again. It's a neighbor, and we have data that is right next to us. So thank you again for all your efforts to make sure that in Madison County and Marshall, we continue the unspoiled beauty so that all the wonderful people will still be healthy and not move away. Thank you again.
Thank you for your comments. That is all of the names that we have registered to speak. We do have some time remaining, so at this time, if you would like to speak, please put your name in the WebEx chat box, which you can access at the bottom right-hand side of your screen. Once we call your name, we will ask you to either raise your hand in WebEx or press star three on your phone, so that we can allow you to be unmuted and provide your comments. And once you have provided your comments, please lower your hand, or again, press star three.
Heather, the hands raised are folks who have already spoken. I don't see any new hands.
Okay. Do you want to circle back through the ones who have raised hands? Or if you have raised your hand and you've already spoken, and your hand is up unintentionally, please do lower your hand so that we know not to call on you at this time.
Okay, Heather, we do have one person who wants to speak. This person, I think, phone number begins with 828-206. And then, if you would, please identify yourself and make your statement, please.
Hi, my name is Jemima Cook. I am a, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name again.
Jemima Phyllis Cook. I am a lifelong resident of Madison County and a business owner. I basically would love to have growth in the county, would love to see people prospering. And I don't see how with this asphalt plant, that leads Madison County in a good direction, both environmentally and economically. I hate to be a part of a movement to blockade a business, but I do recognize that a business that puts lots of other businesses in threat, it needs to be weighed very differently. And I would hope that Madison County would look at the fact that, well, I would hope that you at the Department of Air Quality would look at the fact that Madison County did hold a hearing, did decide that it was not good for the county and the future of health, environment, and economic growth in the county. And I don't know why that wasn't sufficient, but because it wasn't, just please take that into account, that the county has already voted on this. The Board of Adjustments has already unanimously decided that it's not good for the county based on the parameters that they have to work with. Everything needs to be done to make sure that one business doesn't create a problem for everyone else's lives. However, that math needs to be done, please look at it from a standpoint of, let's move forward positively and not put everything at risk. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Rahat, are there additional speakers at this time?
Not any new speakers, I believe.
Okay, if there are hands raised, just call on the name.
Okay, so Jim Tibbetts already spoke, so would you like me to unmute him again?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, Jim?
Yes.
I see that your hand is still raised. Do you want to further comment?
No, sir, I left my hand up by mistake.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Rahat, I see a name in the chat, Mr. Pete Whitlock.
Okay. Pete, your line has been unmuted, go ahead.
Okay, hi, my name-
Okay. Hi, uh, my name is Pete Whitlock, and I've been renovating buildings here in downtown Marshall for 22 years now. Uh, we just finished our sixth building, which was the old county jail. And right now we're working on the former glove factory, the Capitol Mill across the river. And, uh, it's a 38,000 square foot building. It's a largest building I've ever tried to renovate in my life. I basically put all my life savings and a lot of my investor money into it. It's a $6.1 million project. It encompasses 18 apartments, 11 offices, three flexible spaces. And I'm really concerned about what impact this is going to have on my mill. Now, I own this mill. I bought this mill from the county. I've owned it for 17 years and for 17 years I've done lots of other small projects, waiting and developing, um, some expertise to get to the point where I could do this project. Now, we're going to have probably 50 people living in this building. That's Madison's, you know, Marshall's population is 850 people. Um, we have women, children, families, we'll have office workers, we'll have a spa that we have planned for this space. And the impact of this mill, uh, I'm sorry, of this, uh, asphalt plant could be devastating on this, you know, um. When we came to Marshall 22 years ago, um, there wasn't a lot going on downtown. And myself and a, and a group of people banded together and, and we've slowly tried to bring this town back to life. Um, it's a beautiful, beautiful area. The locals here obviously love it. The locals here have, um, embraced what we've been trying to do to downtown, uh, to not change it, but to renovate it, to bring it back to life, to bring interesting businesses here that everybody can participate in. New restaurants, coffee shops, galleries, um, people walk in the streets of Marshall again, and that didn't exist for a long time. So I asked for you to think about at the end of your career in government and you're getting ready to retire and there's a, there's a threat to your retirement that they're going to take 50% or 60% of what you think that you've accumulated, you think that you put aside. And to find out that it's, it doesn't exist anymore because somebody decided that they were going to put an asphalt plant or they're going to do something to impact your retirement and what you've planned for majority of your adult life. Um, that's the impact that this asphalt plant could have on what we've tried to do to bring this beautiful, beautiful little town back to life. So that's all I have to say. I appreciate your attention, consideration and judgment. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Um, it looks like Mr. Alan Basist would, uh, like to add to his comments. Rahat?
Um, yes, before we get to him, Heather, there is, um, Rebecca who has not spoken.
Okay.
Uh, Rebecca, your line has been unmuted. Go ahead.
Okay, Kenny. Okay, thank you. Um, I just want to say I appreciate the ability to, um, speak and have my voice heard. My name is Rebecca Turner. I, um, am a newlywed. He, my husband is building a house on Smith Haller, um, which has been a close vicinity of the asphalt plant. And I've been listening tonight and I just wanted to, you know, I keep thinking of the quote that, um, all it takes for evil to triumph is for good men to do nothing. And I just want to say that this, you know, we're building a livelihood out there and this would, you know, take us up, it would be something just to. So I just want to know that my voice is against this and have it heard. So I appreciate that platform this evening.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, have additional new speakers?
Um, not at this time.
Mr. Basist would like to add to his comments.
Alan, um, go ahead. Your line has been unmuted.
Thank you. And I appreciate all the time that you're putting into listening to the community speak out. And there's one clear voice spoken in many different ways. And that is, this is a very unfortunate turn of events that will be detrimental to the welfare of many people's lives. And you don't hear anyone speaking in for it because it's not in anyone's welfare except for the people that own the plant and they don't benefit the community at all. Um, you know, I, I spoke with the meteorologists who are extremely knowledgeable and they, they took the time to walk through and educate me on, on the Wharf model and how they're applying it. And I, I'm a modeler as well. I'm a climate modeler. So we, we speak the same language. And we all know the difference. When you have a grid point that represents one location that is basically supposed to represent another location that's very, very different. And everyone's telling you how different and unique the, the canyon and the unique topography of Madison, of Marshall is. And I did some research looking at the EPA because I'm not a chemist and so this is outside of my normal realm of bounds. But it was very clear that, you know, the, the nitrogen oxides that are ni- nitrogen oxygen oxides that are going to be released from the plant, that because they are trapped in the inversion and do remain over the town of Marshall for hour after hour, they don't mix. They don't disperse. And then the radiation from the sun above is exactly the ultraviolet light in particular, according to the EPA, is basically those toxins are, are going to completely can turn, turn into a nitrogen, the NOx. And those are toxic. And that's what people are going to breathe. And then you've got the benzines and the arsenics and, and, you know, I don't know all the chemicals, but they're not going anywhere. They're staying in the community. And, and they're transforming, they're free radicals. That means they keep on changing and they're chemicals that we don't even know what they'll transform into. And the health of everyone is dependent upon you realizing that this plant is only going to expand. I mean, common sense says this is plant plans to expand. This is just its footing. And so look at it for, for the people that are impacted and the, the community that is raising its voice very clearly that it doesn't want it. And realize that models have deficiencies. We have errors. We have uncertainties. And the canyon of Madison County is way out the, outside of the normal. It's an outlier. That's why people move there and they want to stay there. So hopefully they can continue to live in a healthy environment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, it looks like Mr. Chris Silver would like to add to his comments as well, Rahat.
Yeah, Chris, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thanks. Uh, I just wanted to add a comment, um, to my comments. But essentially from what we've heard from everyone today, it sounds like people are very passionate, uh, very science based, you know, varying backgrounds. And I'm like really excited about that, including from the state standpoint, as well as like federal, uh, federal regulators. And from a stakeholder, um, point of view, I think that this is incredible opportunity for, for us to have, you know, for us to come together as stakeholders and say, okay, well, if this isn't a great location and the signs may or may not back it, why don't we figure out a better answer and a better location that, that, you know, that the community, uh, wins with? It's called zero sum game. It's like a win-win situation. The community wins, the town, the county, the state with the, with their interest, the, uh, federal government with their interest and then business interests. So that's what I'm, you know, working on right now and I'm excited about. And that's why I wanted to add. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any additional hands raised at this time, Rahat?
Yes, um, Heather, uh, sorry, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi, thanks. Um, since Janice Coverdale was not able to technologically join us, um, I wanted to just speak for her for a moment. Uh, Dr. Janice Coverdale has been a pediatrician in Madison County for 40 years. Um, she was a pediatrician to the, many of the members of our Board of Adjustment. And I can tell you that she, her testimony was critical in their decision. And it was because of her testimony about children at the ball fields and the high amount of hand to mouth at the, not only the ball fields, but at the child daycare center, that the children are lower to the ground, that the chemicals aggregate and collect on the ground. And so that compelling testimony of the risk to our children um, was largely the reason why the Board of Adjustment denied that because they trusted her as a doctor and they trusted her judgment. And so I just, I wanted to just take a moment to speak for Dr. Coverdale, because I'm, I'm certain that that is what she would reiterate, the great damage to children's developing lungs. Um, it's very different from an adult being exposed to these chemicals, that the development, the developing lungs, um, are much, much more at risk for, for harm from these chemicals. And particularly from the arsenic and benzene and those levels we know from testimony at our Board of Adjustment hearing will travel to the ball fields and to the early childhood center. So I just wanted, um, you to all, please keep that in mind that we're a vulnerable community here. And we have a lot of vulnerable, vulnerable people in close proximity to this location. So thanks. Thanks, Heather.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else at this time, Rahat?
Uh, no one at this time.
All right. So, uh, we are um, out of speakers at this time. So, uh, the Division of Air Quality will continue to take written comments via mail and email until Wednesday, May 5th at 5:00 PM. And, uh, to provide written comments, please email them to daq公众@ncdeener.gov. That address is also displayed on your screen. Please put Madison Asphalt in the subject line. You may also mail, uh, written comments to the address listed in the public notice. Based on the information received during tonight's hearing and comments received throughout the comment period, I will make a recommendation to the Director of the Division of Air Quality for his consideration in making a final decision on whether to issue the air quality permit to Madison Asphalt. I thank you for your cooperation, attendance and your interest in the air quality permitting process. This public hearing is now adjourned.